I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. We're going to start with the roll call. John Lister, Chuck Campbell, Bridgette Gates, Earl Morton, Curtis Ward. Okay, first is we'll start out with the approval of minutes from the last meeting, which was April something. April 6th.
I make the motion, we approve.
John made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Chuck seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is approve the claims and payroll. Gina, do you want to summarize anything special about the claims?
The only thing I did want to mention was the fireman's grant that we had gotten for the SCBA's. We did get that final approval push-through. We had to do an update because they weren't able to contain as many SCBA's as originally quoted because of the cost. So, we did get that approval. And now this invoice on here is for the compressor and the, I forget what that's called.
Fill station?
Fill station. Thank you.
That's $50,198. So, this is, we pay this and then we give you the reverse, is that how that works?
No, so this grant, we got the federal funds, the federal portion, and then we have to pay our little match with it, and then I'm paying the invoice.
Oh, so we've already gotten that federal portion. One question that I had was the Frisbee sign design for $832.
That came from Phil Patterson. Yes, here's a note for the design of the permanent signs that go down at this stall. So, it's there now, it's just temporary, so we get those signs made.
So, I was just wondering, since there's three of us on the board, can we give that person to, will not make more work, but whoever's in charge of the disc blocks?
I have a woman that's been doing the design and installing. But yes, we've already talked to her. Gina, comment?
Would it be a good...
I asked if you could come to a meeting to kind of give you guys updates on what's coming and what's...
Well, I think maybe the overall picture, since there's some of us that don't know.
Sure. If I just explain to him when the dates were, if he could get back with me when he would be available to come.
That would be great. Thank you. So, that sign design is $832. That was the one that I didn't know about. Any other questions on the claims? I move to approve the claims. Is there a second? John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Next is payroll. So, the payroll, oh, I didn't read the total of the claims. Hold on. The total claims are $200,000, $200,375.71. Payroll is $45,455.91, or over $9,615.68. I move to approve the payroll. John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. So, I just want to start off with the one-way signal from today. So, as many of you know, the one-way signal on Fifth, probably on Fourth Street, was installed today, which is a project that's been ongoing, I guess, in the town for several years. And my intent with this was to inform the public before it happened, that that didn't happen, and I just want to say that's my bad. Little miscommunication amongst people, and I will strive earnestly to make sure that that doesn't happen again. But that was put in. Does Curtis have anything more about the one-way signal?
Any questions about it, if there's anything specific?
Anybody have questions about the one-way signal before we start, we start the agenda?
What was the purpose of the, yeah?
The purpose of the signal?
Yes, so the purpose was, after the House was constructed, the property owners, all the property owners on Fourth Street, I was about to ask the homeowners to come to the town asking for a resolution because there was an issue of parking. So, the road had deteriorated during construction, prior to construction. Some of the options that we had voted around was keeping it in Two Way Street, but it did allow for more parking with the higher density of the House building. So, we invited the property owners to get together and come to put a solution, and asked to let the day decide whether it would be best for their parking situation for that entire area.
Thank you. Another question?
Is there going to be any kind of leniency on that as far as laws go, or people, since we didn't know it was going in right away?
I'm sorry, leniency on laws?
Well, you can get that one way through, you can get a ticket, so.
It was usually signs up, probably not the one-way.
I said it was usually signs up.
You know, it has quick. I think we'll get used to it pretty quick. I think the light.
Sorry, I haven't seen the lights set up yet.
Yeah, you know, if somebody accidentally goes through there in an accident, I mean, it's no big deal. Sure, I mean, that's a cheap idea, but whoever's only on the license will get followed.
I think he's talking about being used to it, people don't know it's there right away. And I just turned my accident into it. That's why, I think that's where it started.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why I brought up the light. I'm not sure what the light. Do they say no right turn or no...
It says do not enter on Fourth Street.
It just says to not enter.
Or, sorry, on Fourth Street. So, two signs say do not enter.
There's nothing with the overhead lights yet.
What do you mean that?
Well, I'm sure there's somebody who orders no right turn, you know, can't light.
I'm sure there's...
Some sort of lighting problem.
Oh, okay. Like, is there like a no right turn on the light? That's a good question. Okay, thank you.
Because I just don't just have that much.
Yeah, they'll go to turn and see if they do not enter. We'll check on the... Okay, next I want to talk about the, just a small dig at the golf course, because we're really excited. The Brookhill Golf Club, this is revenues straight on?
Yes.
Revenues of $102,400 per year to date. So, really happy about all those revenues coming in as the season starts. We currently have 84 members signed up, so that's going in the right direction. Yeah, we did that last month, but we're going to do the expenditures every quarter. Just, and we'll try to do the revenues every month, because John does that every day. Next is, just an update on the construction with the new police department. The permit has not been approved yet. We originally told it it would take 30 days, and we're kind of at the 30-day mark. So, just today, we just said there's no news back yet, so I just want to keep everyone informed that we are following up with that permit. And one last announcement for the street department is that next week, Row will begin work on paving the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Streets. And then Franklin Avenue, so they said that should maybe take a week, maybe four or five days, something like that. So, that should be happening next week, depending on weather, what that is the plan. Do you have anything to add for that, Jess?
I was just going to ask for possibly free parking for not only residents, but people who work at the businesses that that would affect, maybe through Fourth and Fifth, maybe extended to Sixth Street, if possible, during that time.
Makes sense to me that it would be displaced during construction, so I think we did that in previous construction, so it's not going to be a policy.
So, are you suggesting from Fourth and Main to Sixth and Main? So, there's two blocks?
Yes.
Or Third?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah, Third through Sixth, I think would be the biggest impact. Bank would be, Bank would be filling Sixth and that, they park in that area.
Do we put those little bags on top, or do we just say not, no tickets, or how do we do that?
I would just be specific in the areas of what you're talking about. So, if you go from Fourth to Sixth, the interference that you're going to get there would...
Can you move to the microphone?
Sure. The problem you're going to be having is, if you go from Fourth to Sixth Street, if you put the bags on, I agree, because then it will show that this area here is for parking. If you go to Sixth Street and people start parking in their cars by the dollar store, or everybody's going to go to the dollar store, then we're going to get flooded by all the businesses that are going to be complaining because everyone who lives on Main Street is parking, and their customers are passing them up, and that's going to become, or we get into it. So, I wouldn't recommend free parking in there by the dollar store, but if we do the Fourth Street and Fifth Street, and we put those bags on there, that might not be too bad of a confusion with the owners, because whatever I say is probably not going to be good.
I'd like to make, I'd like to move to put it from Third Street and Main to Sixth Street and Main and that.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? So, Third Street Main to Sixth Street and Main. Okay, sorry, now, let's go to the agenda. The first thing on, there's Lexical SOPs training, the Lexical contract.
So, we've been looking at trying to set up, re-bank our SOPs, they're outdated. So, Lexical is a company that if we decide to go with, would upgrade all the SOPs, keep them updated in real time. They provide training at our fingertips for the officers. They basically give homework to the officers through the week and give them quizzes to keep them sharp. It's a good product. There's no downside to it, other than the cost.
Thank you. So, yes, so I have spoken to multiple different law enforcement agencies about Lexical. It seems to be the gold standard within law enforcement in terms of policies and training. Another thing that they do is they, when a new law comes out in Indiana, they help develop the policy for that, that the police departments can adopt, or not definitely adopt, but they also provide best practices. These people have lawyers and experienced law enforcement in their company, and that's why they are the standard. Batesville has Lexical, as well as their surrounding communities in Indiana. So, the grant, or, sorry, the, the contract itself, for the annual subscription, at least for this year, which is prerated for six months, is $33,322.72. So, on an annual basis, that would be about $6,000. So, it's only six months. For the rest of this year, we start this on Thursday, Jan. That's the annual subscription rate. And then the implementation fee, which is, I'm talking about all the SOPs, is $13,928.10. And so, the initial cost would be those two added together. So, 13, 9, so 14 plus 3, around $17,000 for this year, and then next year would be around $6,000 for all the remaining years that we keep Lexical. So, it'd be a reaccount charge.
So, if the board decided to do that, it would be hiring a company to go in and actually go through our SOPs and update that. I have been pushing this for a long, long time. It's a lot of work. So, we actually do need someone like that to actually go in and do that. I know it's a lot of money, but we're outdated and they need to be updated. So, even if we move forward to go with that, we can still, a year, two years, whatever it is, cancel it. It was a stop, you know, but we would have the actual updated SOPs. So, we will have something out, even if we decide down the road we don't want to go ahead and continue to pay that yearly, but...
So, also, the Franklin County Sheriff is going to, is wanting Lexical for the jail, so he's going to present that to commissioners as well. So, I just, I think it's a very, very new product, great timing that we did this now. So, any other questions or discussion on it?
Wasn't this brought up at meeting? Wasn't this brought up at meeting before the school was last called? So, it's no surprise?
No, I think it was, yeah.
It was, yeah, apparently it's brought to, apparently it was after returning.
I know what you're talking about.
Lexical or Spelman?
Lexical.
I'm sorry? Lexical or Spelman?
Lexical. It was recommended by the senior risk analyst, John.
That's right, that's right.
Do you know if there will be insurance discounts?
Right, so we actually get a 15% discount. That, the rate that I quote, that I announced was, is a 15% discount on the implementation fee and a 10% discount on the annual subscription fee, because we have to give them a rate insurance. And they encourage their clients to get Lexical, and that's why the insurance company does give us a rate on it. So, that's why it's a little less than what I think people thought. $17,000 to implement is a lot better than, I think, $30,000 is what somebody said at the beginning, something like that.
I make a motion to get that approved.
I made a motion to approve the Lexical for the $17,000, sorry, $17,000. Is there, is there a second?
I second.
Chuck seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Gina, I can see a page coming here. Sign.
I didn't either. I didn't see a signature page on that. If you wanted to sign a cross-page of other proposal, and then I can, if they set a contract ready, I can get, I can get her name now.
Jessica.
Yeah, I'll get her.
Thank you. Next is the ordinance, 2023-5, amendment salary ordinance. This, okay. So, this ordinance was changed, page four, talks about new, so this is based off of the agreement of the council last month about allowing new hires with the police department that have experience and have been through the academy to only have a lower pay rate for the first three months, and then they're bound up to the regular pay rate for the last nine months of their one-year probationary period. So, this just kind of, this makes it a little clearer for the normal person to be able to read that the police officers will still be on a 365-day probation period once they're hired. But the one officer, Brown, patrolman, will get the three months at $20.91 an hour, and then the last nine months at $25.65. $25.65 for the rest of the nine months, and that is the rate of salary. So, all this did was kind of outline what the council decided last month, last month, at the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Curtis made a motion to approve the new salary ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? So, this is ordinance 2023-5. Next is the Oprah Grant. So, there is a CDVG Oprah grant that is called Water Infrastructure Utility Plans. And right now, the Oprah is accepting the applications for this grant, and I think the due date is May 18th. And this grant would be a, all utilities that exist within a community, and what it would be is a engineering plan up to $90,000 to look at all three of our utilities, and basically just tell us which part of the utility needs attention. And then we can take that assessment and start to develop projects based on what needs to be replaced, so that we know what's aging, instead of being surprised by, hey, it just broke. So, this, so it would be up to a $90,000 grant, and then the matching up to $10,000 from the community. So, Oprah has these available on a quarterly basis, and this next quarter, the due date would be in May. So, this is a doable grant, although at this time, we actually can't apply because we have the Preserving Main Street grant open, and it's not under construction yet. So, what I would like the board is to give approval of this water infrastructure utility plan at the earliest time we can apply, after the Preserving Main Street grant is under construction.
Make that motion.
Can I, John made a...
I'm sorry. Can I say one thing? Jess, this question is very good to you, because it is my understanding, because Preserving was a pilot program, that that was not part of that?
It is, as.
Okay, so they changed it from the original information, so, thank you for that.
John made a motion to approve applying for this grant at the earliest we can, after the Preserving Main Street grant is under construction. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Or a second? It's all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I'll just put that on the back burner until we can put that under construction. Okay, next is HWC Engineering Contract, State 101 Water Main.
So, Tim had requested to get this water main engineered. I did have them send an explanation, so if you don't mind, I'll briefly touch on that. Tim Ripper, the utility superintendent, he liked the engineering completed, because we are going to have to bid this project out, so he wants the specs completed on this project. Our workers are unable to do the project itself. It's a larger project that they won't be able to complete on their own. By having it engineered, they take care of everything, such as easements and right-of-way issues, as well as put the project out for bid. So, I think these are things that can be considered. He said also, there's issues because on the state road. So, it'd be better to have it professionally engineered, have the did specs completed, and put out for bid by professionals.
So, just so everybody knows what we're talking about here. Where is the explanation of the project? Oh, here. Is it general description? Is that it? Yeah, okay. So, this is, the scope of the service is, the design services for the replacement of approximately 800 feet of water main and service line connections along State Route 101, east of Reservoir Road, on the north side of Brookhill. The existing main is assumed to be a one-inch or smaller, and the new main would be six-inch. Three new fire hydrants are planned. So, this would be, I think it's, I believe it's around Corner. Is that John Street, Cloud Cemetery, 101? Is what, I think that's the area we're talking about. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we have to do this. I'm not sure what the problem is. What problem we're trying to solve? Does anybody else know?
Yeah, there's a, there's a big track where there was a house, and then it tore the house down, and there's a proposed concept, and that concept will work on the land supply. From my understanding, it's a town responsibility to upgrade the main if it can't service the response, but I was confused, I was confused with the initial scope of the board, and I called down and asked Jess what the project was, because I thought it was on Crest Hill when I first saw it. Is there a way to potentially remove this? Because I know that people are pressed for you, and that they put a, their water project's portable. And I'm assuming that they have somewhere along that there's a way to, having to see if they're moving, maybe...
Expanding that line.
Well, just improving the quality of service that we have for the existing residential there, or the, just a big track.
I mean, I didn't know there was a problem there. Sure, I mean, I, I, I really wanted to take a listen, kind of expand the scope a little bit, at least.
Maybe 10, 15 times, maybe even more about, you know, why exactly. It's maybe because it was still, someone confused that it's a, that's an extension from a loan project. Is it irresponsible to do that? Is it, maybe it's a question of the land, to see who extends that thing. Names are there, but things being proved, is it...
Is it broken, Tina? Does anybody know? It's not broken. Okay, it's just small. It's just too small. John, do you have any?
I'll make a motion to table it, so we can get more information.
Any other discussion or any questions?
Yeah, some discussions. I'm not always so comfortable with HWC right now. I think quite frankly about sidewalk collapse. There was supposedly a compactment study now. Then NDOP comes in, involved with HWC, says, good for a sidewalk. Sidewalk collapsed, from what I understand, and I need to find out exactly where it did collapse. I'm not sure where it did collapse at. We did have trouble with that sidewalk. Does anyone know?
I sent an email to him, and he said, I don't want to watch sidewalk collapse. I don't want to know.
Yeah.
An engineering explanation.
The reason I want to know why or where, because a lot of people might not be familiar with this, but riverfront apartments, they're a back building that's closest to the river, that's had to be reinforced because of sinkholes. And we, nothing I can't be, is, I would like the river. I don't know how the river doesn't really run wild down through there. I also heard that across the road, at another business, they were starting to have some, I heard this from a relative, the state, that there was some cracks in walls. That, to me, sounds like brown stuff. You wouldn't know more about that curse than I would. And before having some sort of trouble with that, we might have to get the DNC or DNR involved to rip right from them to keep this from happening in the future. So, I'm just, I'm not happy with the whole deal. I don't think that's fair, you have to pay for a sidewalk to break down.
So, do we want to table it and ask, sorry, motion is on tape, is on the floor, anyone seconded? All in favor?
All amended, okay, that's a good question.
To ask, to ask Tim Ripper to find a second opinion on the engineering services.
All amended, motion. Do that back.
Is there a second on the amendment?
I second.
All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Back to the original motion. The motion was to table and ask Tim to find a different, find a second engineer? Is there, and it was seconded? Is, on favor? All opposed? Okay. You have to approve the amendment first, and then get back to the main motion. I've been studying. Roberts rules award, okay, welcome. Next is the Street Department Salt Farm Engineering Quote. So... Oh, you do have a second one, okay. So we have, so this is to build a salt farm, 36 by 48. They're right next to the street department on the property. And Brent's got two quotes, one from Clay Farm Engineering for something? Oh, $5,800 for the engineering of it. And then we have one from Maze Design at Richmond for $9,500. And Brent recommends the Clay Farm Engineering because it's cheaper. And they would, again, be able to abide all the state laws and all the specs and permits.
Make the motion to accept Brent's recommendation.
For Clay Farm Engineering for $5,800. Is there a second?
All second.
Curtis second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Did they send a comment for this at some point? There's no reason.
Yeah, just put a proof down there, and I'll let it go down.
Next is the Street Department Sign. This is a 96-inch by 46-inch sign for the Street Department for $5,380 from Clean Company. Put on the Street Department building.
Does it need the sign job, yes? No, it does.
So I think Brent's intention maybe is to just get approval, and then we can go to the remaining process.
Okay, so he's...
He's just checking for a design first idea before we go that far.
I think a sign needs amended, because this is a nice sign, and there's been several others within the board, that'll be required because it's a real sharing.
Agreed.
Is it too big? Is that...
Well, I have more than $300, which I think is still in there.
Has more, what?
Yeah, there's a total limitation on signs. There's size limitation, and then there's also the zoning, that area, what you can put on it. So I'm going to motion to approve the concept, and then bring it back for permanent.
And the DOD? The DOD?
Absolutely, the content and DOD, I guess.
Is there a second?
I have second.
Chuck second is all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Girls' Softball Building Permit Number 985.
So the new board members might not be aware, but back in December, the Franklin County Girls' Softball Organization came to the board to amend their town park plan, which included this shelter design. And that was approved, and then at that point, they had to get an engineer to do their drawings and submit the state design release. So they're coming back in front of the board with their state design release approval with the drawings.
Do they have a COA?
No. So at the last meeting, I asked that building permits come to us, they come to us with a COA?
So that's my dad, because I didn't think that the shelter needed a COA. So I, she said they are not in a hurry for construction. Obviously, they want to wait till after their season is completed, so I don't think that's an issue. Get the COA to it first.
And is there any way that she can kind of, against, to this board as well, since there's three new members? Just to kind of give us the spiel, since we didn't really get that about the overall plans? That, did, was anything else approved in December besides the shelter? For them to do improvements in the park?
I have to double check the minutes, but I love to remember. I think it was mainly due to the shelter, from what I can remember, but I could pull the minutes there, and I'm for sure. There was also a site plan that was submitted.
It'd be nice if she came and informed the new board?
Sure.
Just to make sure we're all...
I appreciate you seeing me back.
Perfect, thank you. Next is Rob C's building permit number 986.
Do we need to make a motion to table this?
Oh. Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to table until we have a chance to come back to the board and receive a COA.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Chuck second is all in favor? All of those? Thank you. Next, Rob McSee, application number 96. It looks like they want to do a 12 by 24 lead tube on the back of the garage.
That did get approved for COA on Tuesday's meeting, and then I had Tim take a look at that yesterday, and it's that fast.
It does? It needs to set up?
It's a survey or something. This is a call to, we don't see how it's...
That's the same stuff.
This is also for metal roofing on their garage door, or garage, hundred grain. Lead tube on the patio is about 100 years, right? And voters. So there's no COA in here? There's no piece of paper?
It looks like it now, I don't know.
No. It's not?
I have it approved, I can...
That's from Jared. It's a recommendation for approval, but the actual COA isn't in here.
I have it.
Signed by Paul Oster?
It's signed, it's right here. It's signed by Jared. They're all signed by Jared.
Remember the last meeting, I asked for Paul Oster's signature? Because we don't, I don't think it's a good idea that the approval is done by contractor. It needs to be done by the president of the commission?
That was already signed on, I believe Monday is when he sent it, but that's fine. I can do that.
Any discussion? Do you guys want the COA to be signed by the president of the commission, or by the contractor?
Do you have the authority to require that of those engineering candidates?
Well, because the contractor's going to change. I mean, depending on the contractor.
I think it's good practice, but I still feel we have the authority to...
Ask them?
Yeah, and I'll check into it, that's fine. Our next meeting isn't so, anyway, so it's fine.
So we're looking for a second?
I think we're looking for a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit.
Curtis made a motion to approve permit 986 for Rob McSee.
I have second.
Chuck second, and all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. And this is one year from the date of issues. Next is River Valley Resources.
So I was contacted by Debbie Cole, she's a case manager for River Valley Resources. It's a work mentorship program. When I spoke to her at Real Industry Super, he did say that years ago, she thought it was 2018 or 2019. I was here, and do not remember that at that time, so I think it was before my time. They have a work mentorship program where they have workers come in. We give them things to do up to 24 hours a week. I think the last time they painted hydrants, we did those sorts of things. The River Valley Resources pays the workers themselves and takes liability for the worker. I did talk to Brent and Andy. Brent said that he did have some painting for someone to do, and Andy said that he could have the hydrants painted as well. So if council is willing, this person will be here for 46 weeks, $24 a week. And then once that work mentorship program is over, then it's complete.
Thank you.
So they paid, they paid the workers, and they...
River Valley Services, yeah, we do not pay them.
Does our works come out?
That I don't know. But she said that they take the liability, their policy, that was included in the policies and procedures, so... I could, I probably would have to check with our agent.
So this says, "In event of personal injury, worksite or disaster notifies them." And then worksite is responsible for accurately and thoroughly completing the critical incident report and forwarding it to the administrative office in Madison. Doesn't say who pays.
Okay, on number two, it says, "River Valley Resources needs, is the employer, and then under Subsegment 6, coverage in accordance with state law's constitution."
Very good, so they pay.
That would be my concern.
Because these are, are these kids, mostly? Or are these adults? I'm not sure. Okay.
I'm not positive. She did say that the gentleman that would be coming has no prior experience, so it's definitely a work mentorship. He has no work experience.
I see. One of the things in here talks about that we know and understand the laws for minors working, so I don't know what those are.
Will this stay in place, the summer work program? Reggie, does he raise summer offense still?
He is not requesting issue.
It says we'll start within the next couple of weeks, she says, so... Any other discussion, or want to take that motion?
See if it's a deal.
I move to approve the, and sign, and allow me to sign the agreement with them, with the River Valley Resources.
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? Next is Historic District Boardments.
I make a motion to amend Historic District Boardments to Main Street only, from Third Street on the south, and the north boundary on Oakville, of the St. Parnell Avenue, Upper Street, or Memorial Road.
Is there a second?
I have second.
All in favor?
Can we have a discussion?
Oh, sorry. Discussion. So, discussion.
The only point I would like to make, changing the map area doesn't change the applications of the guidelines. And so I think that at the last meeting where we have the HWC present the information to the townspeople, to the town board members who are there, part of the issue that came up was the guidelines, not necessarily the map itself. The map has been in place in some shape or form since the 70s. However, there have been no enforcement, there have been no licenses or guidelines in place, so if the map is 100% of the Brookville, there's no guideline, there's no issue. If the map is 10% of the area of Brookville, and there's still these guidelines, I still consider it an issue. So I would like to see us submit the guidelines. The original intent of the Preserving Main Street Grant, and the Preserving, or the Historic Preservation Commission, was to preserve historical homes, historical significance. I think that it can do that. I think that the guidelines that we have in place far overreach what it was intended to do, at least from my perspective as a past caller member. And I think that the prudent thing to do rather than to essentially say, it's not good for the entire area, but it's good for the business owners on Main Street. I think that's an unfair and inadequate position for the board, but those ten, those property owners on Main Street. I own property on Main Street, I own property, you know, residential properties, vacant lots. I have opposition to some portions of the guidelines, and I don't have oppositions to all of it. But I think that a intentional conversation to pick and choose the guidelines that actively apply to our flow, to reach people that we had and we set out, which was to preserve the historical structures, is the best thing to do, rather than the nature of the action, just to amend the area, because it doesn't really think in terms of the guidelines. It still leaves those property owners on Main Street, subjected to all of the issues that those guidelines present. So I would, I would ask that you, with all of your emotion and reconsider, focusing on making guidelines and making them adequate to the entire town, not just a portion of the town.
Thank you. Before I end? Yes, I do want to see, thank you. So these guidelines, are these seven stone?
No, they're not.
So I'll tell you what happened.
They're guidelines. They're not laws. They're guidelines.
I'll tell you what happened from the perspective of the law.
What happens when we break that? Does anybody know?
From the perspective of the guidelines, they gave, the city overview to the town, and said, hey, this is a two million dollar grant for a reserve structure, fantastic, although you have to do this. And it was such a condensed timeframe for us to do it, that Indiana Mars Consultant we use currently, and then said, these are the guidelines that we put together and we recommend. They are not hard and fast rules. You guys can pick and choose to write laws, says, you have to come and ask for permission to do a particular right in place.
Yeah.
That's not applicable to Brookville. And so when he described it to me personally, he said, it's just guidelines, they, it says in May, it doesn't say that you have to. But then when you go to the HWC, because I've been there for all of my personal properties, he sat there tapping on his paper saying, follow the guidelines, follow the guidelines. You have no, you have no option but to follow these guidelines. That's the issue that I have, is that it leaves the HWC members looking at the guy that we, this board has hired for oversight of the guidelines, and he's telling them that you have to follow these guidelines. That's not what he pitched to the last board, and that's not what I approved. And I want those portions of change, I want those HWC members to be able to reasonably determine what's good for Brookville, and it's not what's good for Indianapolis downtown Pennsylvania Avenue residents. It doesn't apply here. And I think that's the issue that people had at that last meeting, is that these guidelines, they're, oh, well, we're not going to enforce them all, but we might, because of mine. They're not even by one of those under construction, but those guidelines said, I have people of those, but they made an exception, said, if you were deciding, you can be by one of those. That's not good a practice, because it at least is subjective to people to say, okay, well, they allow the curse word, they should allow for John Mestrich. Oh, and if they don't allow for John Mestrich, well, it's because they like curse word. That's the issue that I have with the guidelines. I don't think the map is the issue. It's the rules. And I think that we need to look at the rules and say, what's applicable, what's not applicable? And then use them to do what we want that grants to do, which is preserve the structures, and to, you know, to enhance our, our quality of place. That's what, that's what we were about, what the grant does, to place things in great quality of place grant. I think that we can do it, but I think that would give a rush. It didn't give the townspeople the proper time to, you know, have their, their own solution, or their concerns. It didn't allow me to order the time to actually properly vet that. And then now, I'm dealing with the consequences myself, and I know a lot of people are, and I think Fairwall, South Fairwall, and earlier, I said, they've been dealing with this for several weeks now. It's not, it's not a fair position to put people over a filter, but I don't think that the solution specifically straightened that down. The solution is to look at the guidelines and say, this absolutely doesn't apply, we don't allow it here. There are sections that we could apply here, but that's, that's my position on it, and that's why I actually am not against your motion. I think that you are on San Diego, and that may be first time.
Of course.
So I think we're on San Diego, you can do it without, without just scaling that completely, and make it fit for the town of Brookville, and try to reduce the load that the city wants to do.
On the map, I think you're talking apples and oranges. As I understand it, the map was drawn by John New for the national historic, this estate. They just chose, as I understand it, to take the national. That, you know, they go to chose Main Street. I don't see probable choosing.
So initially, initially, the answer to this is that they want to go to the town to determine where the map was. And so my, my position was that if you're a property owner on Main Street... And so my, my position was that if you, if you're a property owner on Main Street and you were struggling with a concern, which I talked to several of them, that says, I can't afford to do these guidelines because they're too stringent. And they go, and say, well, we still have to do this because the state requires to rule on that two million dollar grant. I sympathize with those people, because they're the ones on the hook for the two million dollars. And only, only ten buildings are getting that grant. So out of any some buildings out of that, only ten's going for, are now available for that, and then it's already still back to less than ten. And we have to restart the construction. So now we just have to move this amount, we said, you have to comply with these guidelines. My position as board member was that if it's fair for some, it should be fair for all. If it's not fair for some, it should be fair for none. And so that's the position I'm going to take on. If it's fair for Main Street business owners, it should be fair for property owners, because there are benefits to being in the preserving district. And I know that there, there are, there are different kinds of thoughts on why and how there are grant applications that are available. I know they touched on that very briefly, not very well, at that, that information only. But there are benefits to doing that. And Mrs. Page, I'm really caught, the house costs should be for her. I know I have a little expensive house, which is going to restore costs, but I started with the bill on that because of this. So there are ways that we can make the map as it's presented in work, to make it fair for all of Brookville, or my position will make it fair for my Brookville.
Well, I don't think we go ahead and shrink the map down to Main Street. And then if you want to change the guidelines, go ahead, we'll change the guidelines, but it'll just be for Main Street. I don't think all the residential area needs to be part of the historic district. I think, and once again, you're talking about Main Street that everybody sees and residential area where we live and pay taxes. I don't think any, hardly anybody owns tax permission before they pay their house, before you have that permission to cut a tree in your yard.
And I disagree with all of that.
With that, I need this. I've got a neighbor who can rent a tree for you, that one, I could have told him, no, you're not supposed to do it.
And I disagree with all of those concepts. I think that we can solve the issue by changing the guidelines to where it does preserve, it does preserve the older characters. I mean, this whole house that I, that I bought, that I finished on the down, that now they look great, and they, they all benefit to the town versus, I mean, what? Without those guidelines in place, in some shape or form, I can go live in the crossroads of my town.
I have a suggestion, Mom, is suggest to shrink the map down to Main Street only. And then any of the residents in town that want to be part of the historic district, they can apply to be forever.
Yeah, so I'm, as I wrote in the paper today, yesterday, I am in support of the historic district, and I, I do think that the easiest way to, to make change at this point is to change the guidelines, because they are not law. And then we, what should have happened in the beginning is the town should have created the Historic Preservation Commission. Then the commission should have gone to school to learn how to better preserve. Then they should have gotten together and suggested a map. And then they should have gotten together and suggested guidelines. We have what we have because it was a rushed thing. And I think the easiest way to undo, to peel back the layers, is to peel back the last layer first, in, which is the guidelines. You know, blowing up the, the map would be the second thing. If we can't create some guidelines that are, that make sense for the town, then okay, let's peel the map back. But I think that whenever you do something and you mess it up, you start with the first thing, the last thing you messed up, and start that over first, because going through the guidelines is what we have to do, but we haven't done yet. And the meeting last Tuesday was supposed to be only talking about the guidelines and only educating people about what's in them, and it didn't do that, in my view. I, I would like, and I think the Historic Preservation Commission is, has a new charter. I think they want to start to educate, to tell people, you know, yes, if you bought one of those two years ago, and you didn't put them in, now you want to put them in, I don't think there's going to be an issue. But I think that they need to word the guidelines the way it's going to work for everybody. I, I think that's the, that's the smallest solution to this problem, just try to solve it in the smallest way possible, instead of redoing the entire district. I don't want John Newt's work for over fifty years to be tarnished.
Do, do we know for sure that if we change the area, that it doesn't impact the grant?
I don't know.
And I, I'd like to fully admit, and I'd like to verify that we're not at risk of losing the grant or paying it back, because there was that conversation early on that if the town, if the town didn't fulfill there, then obligations are new responsible paying the grant back, everything that we've expended thus far will look badly.
Are any of the buildings getting the grant on Franklin Avenue?
What is that?
Are any of the buildings getting, benefiting the grant on Franklin Avenue or Valley or?
That was going to be my question.
Because the answer, the answer is, in a broader sense, the answer is yes. The whole, the reason why, I mean, the preserving Main Street grant has sparked an interest from the state, that because they've seen what the community of Brookville here do. And, and they have, they have invested in this. And the preserving Main Street grant and the South Grant is supposed to help economic development, is supposed to make our town prettier and nicer to be in, to attract more people to come here, to spend money here, for, which would benefit the residents in an, in an indirect way. So to answer your question succinctly, the answer is, that's the intent, yes. Not directly, but indirectly.
We don't want to be able to work, the idea of experiencing it around the digital area is that there are grants available through the state that allow historic residents the same option as the Main Street businesses have. And once again, I should think it was fair that only a small, very small percentage of people on Main Street actually receiving the dollars, and then everybody else is stuck with it.
Yes, we can listen to the residents. Hold on, sir, can you please connect that? I apologize, I wanted to answer the council's question.
My concern has been, well, it's just, you know, I'm part of a historic district, but I really don't care about it many.
I'm sorry, can you?
Just two million dollars, that was.
I'm sorry, sir, I was sorry.
Well, I went on just to make an awful thing come about. Anybody other than Main Street wasn't offered that opportunity. And now you're telling me that I'm in this district, and I would have applied for money. I, I would say a lot of people in here would have applied for money, but it was designated to certain individuals on Main Street. But yet you went to the whole town, and I agree with John, you know, if you wanted to make Main Street, make it Main Street. I don't think they'd buy that in your mind. And then add the option that people want to be in it for the value of a home going up or something, you know, open that, but just, you know, lottery, half the houses that were here in nineteen seventy, I aren't even here anymore. And, and a lot have been built on top of those historic properties. So we're just, I don't know if it was life, you know, for a while, but we just took this map and said, and it doesn't fit. You know, didn't fit, it's seventy-five, my eyes on board, and it doesn't fit now.
Thank you, sir.
It did, yeah.
I'd also just want to remind the viewers here that it is a two-minute limit on comments, and you can't comment twice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
I had a question for any other residents. Is the issue the map, or is it the rules?
Map.
Both. So here, here, if there was a map that had no rules, would you have an issue with that?
But they're guidelines, they're not rules.
So if, so if you have a map that had less, lesser guidelines that protected your investment that's, you have a nice house type there. The area of it is to protect your investment. And that's what zoning does, that's what, how apartments does. This was a step to preserve those, those structures. If this guideline was scaled back in a position that you were comfortable with, and I don't know what that would be, and I don't think the ordinance would be, because we haven't explored that, and we haven't given the opportunity to explore that. If there was a way to explore that, to reach the intent of the grant, without scaling back that too, without you, you as a property owner, to have a historical grant, if you had it, if you had a historical. And I don't know, I don't know that we're even able to do like spot historical definitions on a law.
I was told we weren't. I, I was told we were not allowed to identify certain properties within Brookville as part of the district, that it had to be contiguous. And so we can't save the cemetery area, we can't save the hermitage. So if Martha sells the hermitage, and the next owner says, I want condos, they can bulldoze that and build condos, and the town can do nothing about it. If we have these guidelines, we could at least have something against demolition to save, and I always, I've said this to many people, crazy people, from ruining the uniqueness and the beauty of our town, in these older buildings, for our future, for the future of people coming here, because it's such a quaint, bungalow town. We don't want crazy people to ruin it, and this would stop them from doing it, because there's no building in the county that would stop them from bulldozing the hermitage and building condos.
The previous board rushed to put these guidelines in place based off of the grant. I don't want this board to rush to reverse the map without the information that we need. I think that we need to take time to receive the information. So, so far, there has been no property owner that has not had COA. I think I've been the one that they pushed back against us and had to increase my, my bill by fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, other than that, everybody else has passed through, no issue. It's true story, John. And it's fifteen, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars worth of all the side, all the soft and all the fixed stuff.
You, you can afford fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. How many of us can afford it?
Next one, so.
If, if, if we're going to do this, if we're going to take time to do guidelines, maps and everything, there has to be a inventory on COAs until we come up with some. It's unfair to people to have to go into a COA under certain conditions, and then we're going to change.
I would absolutely do, because I think it's unfair if I had to spend fifteen, twenty thousand. You say I can afford it, but, I mean, I had raised the price on property, so now people that could have lived there, may not have been able to live there, because I had to adjust my price up, it's getting passed on to somebody else.
Yeah, we, we get past the cost.
No, and that's what I'm saying, I, I think that, I'm actually a paper of the inventory, because we have more fish, and I don't think that we rushed as a board like we did last time, because we had this, we had a trend to it. I think we take our time, we wish we had that. And we either amend the guidelines to where it's, it's fair for everyone, or we don't get, doing everything we can.
Do you know how terrifying it is, you and I, agreeing?
Yeah.
Mr. James, you have to mend.
Thank you. In reference to the comments that I'm making, I would like to be able to make them with the understanding that I'm verifying some information that was made by the board only as point of information to have, and that kind of gets my, not being able to come up later to make another, some other comment. Because if it does, I'll just go ahead and sit down and take notes in a minute or two.
If you have information that you need corrected, correct information so that the audience has it.
Yeah, okay. Does that, continue? Okay. So the, so the guidelines, so I'm next to me, and I'm the director of Main Street Brookville. I hope that some of the people were very involved in bringing two million dollars to the community of Brookville for their transformational, what a, just how changes. I've done a lot of research, I've talked to a lot of people about the impact of the historic preservation districts in the community. But to first of the point, yes, absolutely, you can change guidelines. Madison just sent me their guidelines, that will probably be effective in about two months. So yes, you can absolutely change the guidelines. The boilerplate that was provided by Indiana Landmarks, just for a starting point, because so the community just wanted to have Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Preservation District, because they know of the benefit that it has been to the community. So yes, you can absolutely change that. The preserving Main Street program, the whole purpose is, I'm going to say, is to build a sustainable historic preservation community ethic, that will look at capacity for local Main Street programs and serve the communities that are on town revitalization models. So the whole purpose of preserving Main Street is multifaceted. It's, there's many different aspects to it, all right? So the, for this particular grant, it's federal grant money. CDG, Community Valor, brought from HUD. They are so very, very narrow, requirements are very narrow. And so therefore, the only properties that would qualify for this two million dollar grant were commercial properties. It could not be any governmental properties, it could not even be properties, private properties, private commercial properties, that had a, a federal program in it. So for example, the WEF program, that building was not considered, because it is a five oh one C three that is understood to grant a federal government program. We could not even have commercial buildings that were originally built as houses. So the free house, which has been commercial for years for five oh one C three, could not be considered, because it was originally built as a residence. There was like these six buildings that were kicked out at the last moment because of that. So it was just very narrow. The whole idea was to provide a, when people came to the house, residents, visitors, whatever, that they would see a transformation, because the state wants our community to prosper in, as proven that the historic preservation is a workable, successful economic development model.
Thank you.
So does that help on some of the?
Thank you.
Okay.
Two things you gotta add. This, first of all, is about the people, not the grant. You guys want to talk, slick talk, relatives want, they're good talkers, we're talking about the people and the residents of Brookville. Anyone only need to look at historical memory to see how well the state version of historical preservation works. Where is the water bill, the grits bill, the canal bill, all the history they fought to protect, they destroyed. If it wasn't for a few failing down fire, tooth and mail to keep it going, it would be a footnote in history today. So we need to downsize it to Main Street only, and go from there.
Well, I'm in favor of the guidelines changing, so, yes.
I agree with John, with her all that. If this, having the whole town is just ridiculous to me. I mean, there's no set, there's no value to it, there's no, it just, what is it bringing to our town? Nobody's riding around in back streets of Brookville, seeing we have all these historical houses sitting there, they're just not doing that. Main Street is an eyesore in our town. It's looked this way for the last, as long as I've lived here, and I haven't seen any significant changes in years. So my thoughts, and this is just me, I don't know how this is going to go, is that change the map, Main Street only, and these guidelines, they don't even need to be applicable to people outside of the boundaries of Main Street. So it's just, if you're doing it that way, okay, well, we'll just stay Main Street, but we're going to leave the guidelines for the rest of the town. That's just opening up a whole thing for more problems and misunderstandings and issues down there. That's all it's doing. So I say, it makes sense to have Main Street historical, fine. Leave it at Main Street, let them have whatever guidelines on the half of Main Street, but leave the rest of Brookville alone, and let us manage our own properties.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hello?
Please, I'm just, um.
Oh, hi, my name is Kara Schuer, I live on Cliff Street. And I would like to know how easy it would be to get my house individually added back on if you changed the boundaries.
You can't.
Because I am one of the few, I'm probably, maybe the minority of this room, but one of the few people that would like to be included at the residential home. I've talked to other people that are misinformed and uninformed, and don't understand what exactly it means to be included. They don't like the, what are the rules, the guidelines, but they don't necessarily want to be excluded, they just want more information. So before you take my helm, what I want to say, and I would like you guys to consider how easy it would be for me to be added back on, because I Because I, I really enjoyed the sound, I like the aesthetic here, I love how beautiful it is, and that I'd like to keep the street, my street, nice. If Cliff Street could be kept on, if that would be possible. Not, that's fine, although there are people that are against it, but I like, I like the idea of my house being on it. And I don't mind, you know, my house applying, the guidelines, being the guidelines apply to. So, I don't want to have that as easily accessible or easily talked about.
I don't think we have an interest in that. Okay, we'll make sure to leave that one if things do settle.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Your guidelines.
We're neighbors, of course, we're answering this, alright. I agree with John, I want to be main street. Fanny Padgett, and I agree with you guys on the community, Michael Stupar. I want to be Main Street, I want to be just like he said. I also agree with Curtis about the guidelines, right now, you should just do Main Street, come back with us if you've got a lot going on, and say we change our mind. But I'm on with John.
Thank you.
Mine's fine, I don't live in the district, the proposed district, but I mean, hard to work, and people I don't want to go on the half market floor. Then he wanted beside a lot of fence, a lot of color, a lot of windows, no more decks. Then I wanted to set up big strangers, and let them do it again, on that part of it. And I appreciate what he said, it's sort of cost the more money that they're, might have spent. And I'm talking about certain, like you got, uh, ceiling to the floor windows, those aren't cheap. And there's some, part of this park, where you're up, there's supposedly supply chains that work with people, but where are those supply chains? Did you think they wanted to build, they wanted to build parks, they wanted to, people picked their own fence out. And 20 years ago, 20 years, they're, Brookville worked so much better than they did 20 years ago. So it's improved so much. And people aren't picking out plum, purple, lime green, one of their houses, they don't pick it out, the blues, the tans, the nice colored roofs, things like that. So it's actually really true of that. So I wonder where this is coming from, why they want so, at this point, we push. I'm here, I'm a hard being on this, though. But this is something that you really have to think about. Because it's normal, we have people, some people I work for are on budget. They're not going to improve their house. And a lot of people want to improve their house, but they're not going to work. They're going to go to jail to get a fence, or windows, or shut, they're not going to get it. High rise windows, or anything like that. So that's just my opinion on that.
Thanks, Carol.
Hi, my name is Carol Weisberg, I've talked to some of you guys already. I spent a lot of time this morning, or actually yesterday morning on the internet, looking at historic districts, pros and cons. And I couldn't agree, I would like it to take out right now for the person who wants their house in. My question, we're going, I'm going to try to, it's about two minutes, so let me know. You know, we go. Anyway, when the historic district, designated historic district, there are councilor rules. I mean, that's been in every guideline that I've read. Perhaps the biggest one is that many historic homes that are supposed to adhere to district rules from the guidelines. I'm more confused, though, about, the other night when we were at the meeting, they said ordinance, that somebody said, if you do not follow the guideline, what's going to happen? You're going to be fined, because it's an ordinance. So we have real difference in definition between an ordinance and a guideline. That's the one, I think that needs to be clarified. Number two, when somebody says that we approve your house, they're giving us permission of what we can do. I agree, most of the Brookvilles can't hear themselves, but the, um, hermitage and seminary, you were talking about those, somebody committed protest. There is a historical registering that you can register your building in. And you probably can't qualify, register your...
It's not allowed, sure.
Okay, so these houses that people want to put in, they can do a historical registering. The seminary, um, the hermitage, and the house here, there's all kinds of qualifications underneath the ID and the historic code. You can hit it on every day, you can get it. And a lot of it, the houses totally qualify for, and a lot of them, they don't. So, why can't we put up Main Street? I understand this mess, but this came in a hurry, you all said. Well, we did it in a rush, but that's not our fault. We didn't have the excuse for you guys to do it in a rush. So, let's pack up all the way, and let's start again. And then put Main Street in, which I love history, but I also don't want to have to go, it is something that I want to do on my house, approved.
Thank you.
My property rights go to where the other ones start.
Thank you.
Do Main Street businesses not have the same copyrights?
They do, they do.
But it's okay for them, not for you. Like, there's ninety-plus places that didn't give you our...
We wanted to call it, we're fine with that.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to, they wanted it, they wanted it. They wanted it, so that's part of it. If you look into the history, that's, they have all these tax credits. There is a lot to it. And also, higher property insurance with higher property taxes. And also, it can also earn higher homeowners insurance, if it's a historic building. And I did check on some of that, somebody just said yes, don't say no. So there is pros and cons, but that's what the historical registers for, for individual houses and businesses.
I hate staying out, I have a voice to announce, I apologize for that. But a lot of us, several of you, probably like ten, want zero or still to do with this. I don't think we need to all want to do it. I can't even afford the application fee, I make fourteen dollars an hour. I'm on a land contract. I don't even make enough to go week to week. I'm in the neighborhood, every single week. So if I'm going to fix up my house, what the director's screaming about, blighted houses in the last meeting, it's not going to happen, because I can't even afford to apply, let alone change something that's going to cost less, or more, or whatever. Guidelines, we have to apply. It's kind of ridiculous, I didn't move my house, so if people want to do this, like asking my parents, can I paint my room? It makes me feel like a child, like it is us.
As always. Thank you.
Hello, Mark Reese. You were talking about crazy people earlier. Well, $2 million for ten businesses, that's crazy. And you're talking, and John, you're talking about making this just a Main Street thing, which is great, because my business is on Main Street. But I wouldn't consider for that $2 million. And you're talking about stopping at Third Street. Well, I'm behind that, but I'm still Main Street. And I'm interested in, my building's historic. I'm interested in the historic aspect of it. And more than that, I'm interested in the possibilities of finding grants to fix my building up. And I think I can do that through the historical aspect. But, just like the last time with the $2 million, it stopped at the top of the hill. It didn't go down the hill. And that's still Main Street towards on. I mean, what's the guideline on Main Street? Goes all the way to the bridge, don't it?
Yes.
It really does. My address is Main Street.
Marky, do you know about the facade grant, the big...
Yes.
That you could get up to $10,000?
And I did that three years ago through Main Street.
Through Main Street?
Sure, four years ago.
Don't worry, the Brookville Development Commission, they have, they have a fund for facade grants for commercial district. They don't, you could apply for it, yeah.
I can apply for it, yeah. My biggest thing was, why does it have to stop right there? Why can't it come down over the hill and include me in that? If I want to be included in it? Not other than I want to be in it. I'm just saying, you're saying Main Street stops right there at the top of the hill, it don't.
Does the historic, the historic district currently does any business? It does.
Just to agree, no.
You are included, you are, you are...
But John, you're both, I'm just talking about the third street.
According to the map, right now, we're in it.
Yeah, okay, good.
But if you contain this to Main Street, and like John was saying, stopping at the third, I'm down by a notch.
Oh, you're not a lot.
Yeah, I'm not a lot, but I'm still Main Street, so...
If we can amend it to make it where it's from the bridge, all the way...
Well, it's a good amendment, to make it to where if you want to be in it, you can. If you don't, you don't.
Right.
I think that we'll, that we would be told is that it has to be contiguous, so... It has to, you know, touch the next property, you know.
Well, I guess that I'm interested in it. I tried to talk, I tried to find out about it, went to that meeting, the third place. I left early, because everybody's arguing. I wouldn't ever listen to arguments, I was there to find out what it was about.
Find out, well...
So, I couldn't, so I left.
I'm pretty sure that the historic commission is going to have additional information sessions to actually inform what it's all about, what...
Well, I mean, you're all talking about right now, about maybe going just Main Street. I just want you to consider that, you know, Main Street goes further than Third Street.
I agree.
John, would you consider, you know, doing a inventory on COAs? While we have a chance to gather information? Because I'm, my concern, and I know people, they don't care if people lose the grant. It's not losing the grant, it's paying that grant back. That's going to be on the tax credit, the residential tax credits, as well as the incentives. Before making a decision without information, at least make an informed decision two weeks from now, if we can get that in our way.
I'm also with the board, so if people won't have to go through this process, I'm okay, I don't have to come on forward, sit down, help this out. But people haven't gone through this process, no?
I'm, I'm in favor of the board, so we get more information to make the decision on what's best for the entire area. If it's shrinking the map down, or if it is, but we can come up with a solution that allows us to scale back the guidelines first, and making sure that if we shrink the map down, it doesn't automatically default or agree with Oprah, that we have to pay that $2 million back. That's a big job, people, town people will have to pay.
Sir, would you like to?
Yeah, I'm going to take two years.
Can you say your name?
Mine is Cole. I'm going to take two years ago. Okay, nobody, I don't have time, most of the time in my day, to sit here and listen to what we use on Zoom calls, or come down here. I'm, I'm a laborer for a construction company. So there are times, I don't get off until, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night. I don't have time to come down here, along with everything else I have going on. I got off early today, fortunately. But this ordinance, this historic district, why, you know, we're all sitting here in the town, wondering, who, whoever was on the board then, nobody approached us. I was told at that meeting last Tuesday, that you guys were voted in, you know, your opinions are supposed to represent all of us. Who came to the meeting and asked my opinion? Not a board member? So what are you guys doing to just automatically assume that's what we want?
Well, I think it's, I mean, I'll just speak for me, everyone else can respond. It's hard, let me tell you. It's not easy to figure out the right thing to do when there's so many constituents that you have. And so, I try to interact with as many people as possible, but the phone number out there, you can call anytime, email anytime to, to, to start a hand here, because I don't, I don't have everybody's phone number or call them. And I will tell you that it is a struggle to find out what everybody really wants. And it's definitely hard, but I try to make the best decision I can to represent, you know, my, my portion of the vote, so...
I understand that, but my thing is, why don't we also go knock on the door? Why don't we actually get face-to-face time instead of a, a phone call, or an email? That, to me...
Well, there's 2,500 people, and this is not a full-time job for, for anybody.
I know, I know. As, as the town board, or council, can't you take a couple minutes out of your evening? Your busy evenings. You know, like, I'm Chair Curtis, I've never met Curtis in one-on-one. I don't, I haven't met any, any of you in one-on-one. I don't even know who represents me. But I'll tell you right now, if somebody was approaching me and asking this, my opinion would be, get rid of it. Put it on Main Street, like John was. You know, it's not fair that out of a hundred businesses, only 10 of them got the grant for $2 million. And I personally, for $2 million? Get it back. Don't, don't, don't penalize me for it, you're going to raise my taxes or whatever. But I don't think we should have bought the golf course.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, this is my personal opinion.
Thank you. So, are we going to reconsider the motion?
No.
It's...
I'll hold it for all, I'll mention it.
Will anyone else like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to issue a inventory on COAs until the board has more information to determine next steps, whether to reduce the map, to reduce the guidelines, or abolish them.
And a inventory means?
Stay, no COA needed during that time.
And is there a time to that review?
I would say within, until the board has more information.
First, maybe motion for, to stop all COA requirements for any, any, to comply with the guidelines, and to comply with the guidelines until there's a review of them. Is there a second?
Second.
John, Mr. Seven, Paul Vierd, all opposed, motion carried.